I think I keep it going, so.
I will be in order.
We're gonna call the meeting in order?
Okay, Jonathan will listen up then.
What is to the fair? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for coming.
As you can see, we have mayor for the day of today's conference, and these are our mayors today. Jonathan Walsh and Archer Lemare. Maybe you want to tell us at graveyard what you did today?
I am a third grader and we went to and we had tours of the water plant, the water plant, um, the police station, the fire station, and the ambulance station.
How about you Jonathan? Did you say more than that?
Eventually you can say something.
I pulled you guys together on that pretty short field we were going.
Yep.
Now your honor, so your problem is you're gonna be mayor, you gotta move to town and get out of that, out of town stuff and come to town so you can be mayor here, right? Believe me, I'll be county commissioner and stuff someday. Being mayor for the day, I went there, I had to write some essays and we picked a couple out and I think we'll have them read their essays first. And Jonathan will read first and Archer will read second what they wrote, why they got picked out for mayor for the day.
If I were mayor, I would, I think you should pick me to be your mayor because I think you, I would be good. I would make Harvey a better place. First, I would build an emergency shelter if there was a big disaster, it could help people out. Next, I would provide school supplies for people in need. Some kids don't have much money, fine. I would plant some more trees into and the country, I would do this so there is better oxygen and shade. Now you know why I think you should pick me to be the mayor of Harvey.
You did. Good job. Hey, Archer.
I think you should pick me to be mayor because I would make, choose very smart plans. First, I would build a new elementary school. I would do this because the elementary school in Harvey is getting old and crumbling. Next, I would build a planetarium for people to see the stars. I would do this because it would bring torch to Harvey. Finally, I would lower taxes in stores. I would do this because more people go shopping there. Now you know why I think we, you should pick me to be the mayor of Harvey.
Alright, thank you. I hope you enjoyed that day going around with Lisa.
Dean, can you guys stand up so I can get a picture of you with their shirts?
Oh sure, why not? Come on in here, mayor for the day. Pretty much I had both your parents in class, so.
Boy, you're old, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, very good. Stick around as long as you want or whatever, so. Alright, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have called the meeting in order for the tax equalization meeting here and uh, Jen Morgan is here today, so I believe that.
Sorry, that was Terry. Susan Morgan.
Oh, I copied and pasted, sorry.
Any visitors that want to talk?
Yeah, you wanna start?
I'll start and then I'll be in. We'll have her start.
I know, any visitors who want to talk will be, feel free to talk after for any taxes after Jenna's done explained what, what taxes were, if you were here about that case.
So I'm here to explain valuations. Um, the taxes are a whole nother entity dealing with mill levies and budgets. So I'm here only about the valuations of structures for residential, commercial, and whatever AIGL did for this year. Um, any agricultural land within the city of Harvey increased by three percent from last year. This keeps all agricultural land at a ninety-eight percent tolerance level, keeping in mind that agricultural land is based, values are based on agriculture production rates, not on what the sales are actually doing. Um, our ratio right now is at about twenty-eight percent of the vet of sales because recently we've been seeing sales of fifty-five hundred, fifty-seven hundred dollars an acre and our average is at about nine eighty. So by increasing three percent, we're staying at ninety-eight percent tolerance level for the state based on production rates. For commercial, there was no changes needed other than some vacant lots that were bought from the city. Um, Marshons are one of them that I can think of. They were exempt, they're now taxable. Let me get to there. It was in your thing, yeah, Martin Karen Marshon.
Hold that one.
But some, looks like four or five vacant lots, they became taxable this year and then the senior citizens building is no longer exempt, so that became taxable as well. For residential, so I handed out and Excel here, I gave it to you guys. Um, there were twenty-two sales, I believe is what's listed here, for residential that were considered good sales within the year of two thousand and twenty-four. The overall median ratio, which is what the state will recognize as being within tolerance, was added sixty-seven percent, meaning that the value we had on the property was at a median ratio of sixty-seven percent of what the sales prices were doing. You can look down that list and you can see there was a sale for two hundred and fifty thousand where previous value in two thousand and twenty-four was a hundred and thirty-three, um, thousand fifty, which is a fifty-three percent ratio. Um, second line is a hundred and sixty-eight sales price, our value was sixty-three, three seventy. This was bought for fifty-seven thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-two. You know, if you go down the list, if you go to the very last one, there was a sale in which a house sold for three hundred and twenty-five thousand, we had it valued at a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred, and in two thousand and twenty-three, it had sold for a hundred and forty thousand, so it almost doubled. No, it almost tripled in what, you know, a year and a half essentially. You can just go down this list. If you see anything that you have questions on, let me know and I can try to explain. We went from a sixty-seven percent tolerance, but doing the adjustments on these sales, it would be a ninety-four percent tolerance. Now every time that you need an increase in the city, it's not just the sales, it would be like properties this year. We identified and put on basement finishes as a minimal finish, meaning it could have partitions in a basement or it might have some shelving units or that are built in or, um, in my, in my house at Sykes, then we considered a minimal finish with an extra bathroom because we put a toilet sink downstairs. You know, so minimal finishes are automatically about fifteen to twenty thousand dollar increase in valuation. Um, we double-checked the grades, um, just to make sure we found a few errors there because everybody gets the same formula to find the grade is how, how well-built something is, not the condition of how well-built something has been done. A four-grade home is very average. It's your traditional twelve-hundred square foot, three-bedroom, one-and-a-half, two-bathroom house, rank-style, one-story type house. And those are very popular for sales this last year. The overall increase in taxable value from two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five for Harvey City, with all of the changes, some increased, some decreased, some increased quite substantially, was at five point six percent. So the taxable value in two thousand and twenty-four was four million, seven hundred, forty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three. In two thousand and twenty-five, the taxable value was five million, eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four for a five-point one, five-point-six percent increase. You guys received a value change report. These are the people that I sent out and noticed for. We have to send out notices for any properties that increased by three thousand dollars and ten percent more than the year before. So you can go through, it's all in alphabetical order. Uh, last year, there are some properties that we don't have a whole lot of information on. Last year, we were going to try and update that, but due to some extenuating circumstances, that did not happen. Uh, we do have a can in place for what will transpire in two thousand and twenty-five from May through August or whenever I end up in a hospital. But in May, what I plan on doing is there were a handful of building permits that I did not, was not able to get to to be, do onsite inspections. They will be done. I will give you an update as to what the values will be and we'll apply them at the county level in June. Um, that will be done prior to the fifteenth of May and then we have some names that are tentative right now as to who we are going to go and reassess onsite. It's subject to change. We're gonna add, take away, depending on what we need from those properties and which ones are kind of trump the others for next year. Um, all the townhouses I need to get to in the city because I have very, very limited information on them. Essentially, the original property card had a outline of one of the townships and, or townhouses and then they just said, well, this is for all of them. Well, that's not necessarily true anymore, so. Any questions?
Okay.
Alright, I guess if you had a concern or something, you could step up to the podium there, if you had anything you want to say about the taxes, I guess. Everybody's gonna be nice. Everybody wants to come up about their taxes or anything, this would be the time to do something.
I got one, but I don't know if it's gonna fall into the right place or not.
Okay.
My name is Keith Holder. Most of you guys know who I am. Um, I happen to live in a neighborhood with four rental properties. I'm the only host where it's got a full-time family in it. Does that change because of location in town, population where you live, area?
Not necessarily. Um, rental properties are still residentially assessed and it's assessed on a marketable value. They might be gaining income from it, but we don't take income into consideration unless it's an apartment building of four livable apartments or more because then it becomes a commercial building.
Okay. Do you want to know if they're getting taxed the same way that I am?
They are.
Okay.
Yep.
Based on their income or on the condition of?
They have, no, they have to be based on what they could have the potential to sell for, just like everybody else.
Box of matches.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, one more, okay.
I'm Willie Shoney, um, question regarding my taxes. In ten years, they've gone up, or evaluation's gone up, uh, almost eighty-two percent on my house. Now, I'm not complaining because the number is close to what, but my concern is I have deferred maintenance on that house. That if I stick windows, new driveway, those kind of things, is that gonna up my value even more?
So. Are you at?
Ten, twelve, Joe, eleven.
Okay, I have that here. So right now, your valuation is, are you in a split-level home?
Yeah.
Okay. We have you at a normal condition for the year in which it was built. We have it as a nineteen eighty-one build. Generally speaking, right now, normal condition is, it's been taken care of. There's not a lot to do to it type of attitude towards that condition now. If you do three or more things within a year, like say new windows, new roof, new siding, that kind of thing, then generally it'll go from a normal to above normal because you're extending the life of that property, is the thought process behind it. Now, I can increase it to an above-normal condition, but it's up to the board as to whether they want to approve that or not in later years. So theoretically, right now, you're valued at two hundred sixty-one thousand, right?
That's what you're proposing.
Yep. So if it went to an above-normal condition, just that condition change, it would go to two ninety-five. So yeah, you would see the increase by.
I, I don't get how you're, how you're doing this. Are you, you're basically square footage, right?
We're based on square footage, condition, grade, year built. There's, there's several things that go into it. It's not just strictly square footage.
Okay. So. Yeah, I, I understand the condition part of it, you know. I, I can kind of see where you're coming from, but I, I don't see where the increase is.
And, and keeping in mind that these increases are determined by what people sell their properties for, you know? Nobody ever wants them to go up, but ultimately, when you go to sell them, you want the highest point you can get. But we have to list properties at a, what is considered a marketable value. So every property goes through the same kind of format. What is the condition? Is it in normal or above-normal condition for the year in which, which belt? Uh, excuse me, it's belt, built. Um, what grade is it at? Is it, um, at a four, which would be average? Is it at a three? Is it at a two? And what affects grade is, is you use average development, like Menards versus special-order materials to build the house.
What, you gotta show invoices and stuff?
No, no. Um, I always put everything at average for every property in the county. Unless I know it's been special ordered because of the owner telling me that it has been. You know, if, if it has air conditioning, that, that would increase or, it's all on a point system. So you get points for how many square foot it is. You get points for if it has air conditioning, you deduct if it doesn't have air conditioning. You add if it has a fireplace or you deduct if it doesn't have a fireplace. And then that, it, every structure goes through that same format as far as residential goes. And then at the end of the day, whatever, however many points that is, is what we graded at. So there's a grade system that says if you're at forty-two points at the end of the day, then that would be a four-grade home. And that's how that grading system works. So there is five-grade homes, there's six-grade homes, which are below average, very small homes, you know, four or five hundred square feet, one bedroom, one bath type of house. There are also three and two-grade homes, um, those on, oh, what street is Riverview? Is that what it is? Um, you know, where Stan Brooks lives and, and them, you know, they are two-grade homes. And because they are newer, then they're going to have a higher value as well. But our prices, because there's no sales for newer properties, it's hard to value newer properties as more than what an eighties home is going to sell for because that's what is generally selling. You know, we're getting prices, we're getting sales for seventies, eighties in the two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand dollar range or more, depending on square footage. So there's a lot of things that go into each valuation and I try to do everything as consistently as possible so that there's no, oh, I did something good for this person because I like them and I did something bad for this person because I dislike them. There's none of that. It's all through the same formula for every single one.
So, uh, with, uh, like next year, you'll be looking at these again?
Yep.
So will you be looking at these same properties again?
Well, what I'm planning on doing is I have a, I have a list of properties that I need information on that I don't have information or not all of the information for. Um, we have a list and Denise and I, um, we plan on going out as soon as we can, as soon as, you know, the weather is popular now, but unfortunately too busy to get to onsite. But starting in May, June, July, and the first part of August, we're gonna go, we sign out letters about two weeks prior and we're gonna go and we're gonna measure, take pictures, put a grade condition and update all of that information on the ones that we don't have. So our focus isn't on those we've already done, it's on those that we need information from for this next year.
So you'll get them in two years again?
I'm on the summer's list, so if you wanna switch, we can switch.
That'll be Willie? Well, we got an understanding over there, right?
Hi, Donna Ettinger. Um, I had a question. If my home does not have egress windows, but there is three bedrooms in the basement and a bathroom, I can't really list it.
Right.
For that, may not be able to sell it for that. So the market value, how does that play in with egress windows?
So, okay, I'm gonna bring you up here. So are you at three hundred, Desmond?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Used to be an apartment down there.
Okay. So in these, there's, there's a difference between the assessing world and the real estate world. Real, real estate world will say you have to have egress windows to call a big bathroom, or, excuse me, bedroom. The assessing world, we identify them as bedrooms even though there's not any egress, but it doesn't add any value either to it. Bedrooms don't add value. Bathrooms do because it's plumbing. It generally adds twenty-four hundred dollars per bathroom for plumbing.
Okay.
Um, we are going to identify a basement as a finished basement or something along those lines, but we're not going to add any value because there's additional bathroom, bit, excuse me, bedrooms or like a ref room or something like that downstairs.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else?
Oh, no.
You're okay. Dan Stuleen, and I, I can mute Willie's since I bought my house. Now, that is eighteen years ago. It's up a hundred and forty-five percent. And, and that's okay. And I'm glad you got to talk a little bit about market value versus assessed value because not only is my house insured for way more than what you're proposing to go to, I wouldn't sell it for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It would have to go up a hundred and twenty grand for me to sell my house. Okay? So I have no qualms with this. I am, you know, I know that folks would automatically assume that if the valuations are going up five point eight percent, taxes must be going up five point eight percent. That's not true. That is absolutely not true. They'll go up based on whatever the budget for the city, the county, the school district, the ambulance district, all of those things are. And I'm positive we'll have caps, not that we didn't have caps before that come out of the legislature. I got a very difficult job and almost an impossible one to do without having full access, but market value and assessed value are not the same thing. And my final comment is Willie's taxes should be higher. Not shove on his side one. Okay, anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? If not, I guess we'll need a motion to accept, uh, yeah.
So move.
Another great question, so. Donnie, you have a second. Milo, second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, big vote call vote. Donnie?
Yes.
Milo?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. For your information, one of our board members is in the hospital, one is sick and one is gone. So that's why we're short here tonight, so, have enough that, so, your one. Okay. Meeting adjourned. And now we will.
Much to God.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Same old, so. I'm sure the rest of this will be entertaining, but I am.
Hey, Dan, you could go to the ice and take a shot.
Sure. Alright. Call the meeting to order then, okay? I would already did the pledge and everything, so. The penitentiary before and the roof dipper, I don't know. Second?
I'll second.
Mike? Discussion, discussion, any discussion? I'm not saying, we're all, we're saying, I.
I, I.
Close sign, financials. The average cash report, vouchers.
Motion to approve.
Donnie, motion to approve. Is your second?
Second.
Mike? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Roco.
Yeah. Roco, yeah, okay. We'll have a roll call vote. Donnie?
Yes.
Milo?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion carries. Alright, visitors, Greg Christensen.
Yeah? I'm assuming you're gonna talk about the parking over there briefly. Maybe too long. But I just think that I would be like, I was debating whether come would make much of a difference, but I would be remiss if I didn't like just bring up, what I worry about with changing the parking in front is just the safety of the, of my, I have about half, I'd say, senior citizens that come in to the dental clinic and they really do depend on if we don't, if we do that parallel parking in the way of the office, which I understand the reasonings for it. I mean, I have a lot of people coming from across the street, like with walkers and not be able to get right up onto the sidewalk. Usually what they do is they, older people aren't gonna parallel park too very much or if they do, there might be a problem. I worry about them opening up on the street when they have to get their walker out of their car. When you pull in on a diagonal, you at least have some safety with the other cars. They feel more safe that way. And then they'll use the front of their car hood to get up to the sidewalk and in kind of. And now what's gonna happen is they'll wanna pull in forward, so they're gonna go across the street and then have to cross like in inclement weather, so. That's what I worry about. I mean, yeah, people do kind of come down that road pretty good and I just, I'm worried more just about them and for that I should at least mention it, that it's gonna be harder on our elderly population and some stuff like that, so. It's really all, I would just kind of wanted to talk about, I worry about their safety and stuff like that and they're trying to get across the street. Then in front, if we do it parallel, I know we could like at least put a, a van in where we can get some wheelchairs out of, but I can't have two people in a wheelchair in the office at the same time because I wouldn't have a spot for them to kind of pull up in front because they have to be able to get to the alley, then back, and then to my ramp in order to do that. But I understand that things kind of need to be done, but I do worry about a lot of the elderly people are gonna have a struggle with that. And we're gonna be dodging our retirees across the street, so. We probably have about, you know, two hundred people probably come to the office during the week, you know? So that's quite a few elderly people that come into the dental clinic, so. However that kind of works out, I just thought I would, just wanted to share that.
Okay. Would it help if we put a handicap?
Well, sure, I mean, I'll have, I'll have to do that, like do a blue curb and for, for that. Only one person's gonna be really using that. A lot of people don't, senior citizens necessarily have a. Only one person's gonna be really using that. A lot of people don't, senior citizens necessarily have a handicap thing. People should, but they don't, but it's more for when the hospital comes over with the bus or Maddock has a bus that they bring over and stuff from time to time, so. Yeah, I mean, we can, and the logistics of it is okay by me. I mean, I get the concept and wanna widen the road so it's not so closed in. What I just worry about is them coming across the street, especially while, I don't know, in the wintertime, it's, you know, it's not gonna be great. Where before they could get out of their car, they wanna step right up onto the shovelled sidewalk and kinda get in, so. Those are my concerns and I just wanted to share.
Okay. You know, I, I, I'm, I'm just gonna be honest a little bit, Craig, I guess, but I understand what you're saying. And I've been driving by a lot lately and I've been looking and I'm only like seeing two cars in front of your place a lot of times and stuff. Fridays you guys aren't even open. I feel for you. I mean, I don't, but something's gotta be done over there.
Did you drive there today? It was a buzz off.
I think it was this morning and I got back at ten o'clock, but I, but driving, I, hardly else been driving by here.
I know we kinda wanna use it up around the mall area too, I mean, I get that. But it, it, to me, it, it makes sense to do it the other way around. But then that would mess with the parking for the mall area, right? And so I kinda see kinda where we're at. I just think that a dental clinic is an essential business.
Every day, I don't know whose pickup it is, but every day I've gone back there, that black pickup's been parked every day and it's been sticking out farther than anybody else's, you know, and that's a.
Well, yeah, but every time when someone comes in there, well, if you kinda do your math, the math numbers, the people kinda, the, it's not just, so I got, of course we got employees, right? We're gonna have to try to go somewhere else. I'll figure that out a little later. But, like, it's not just three people an hour that come in there, it's the people that come for their next appointment. They don't, well, you can't pull in here until this person's gone, you know, so it's almost like at all times, there's, should have six slots. Kinda that's not gonna be enough along the front. But, I mean, it'll work. I just, it's really a safety issue for me. There's nothing really else, I mean, the clinic's gonna be open one way or another, people have to just get in there. But I just kinda think, and that, that's really my only kinda thing. And it being busy, it's an extremely busy dental clinic for as small as it is. It's like a little beehive around there, so. But we, like I said, we probably have a couple hundred people a, a week coming in and out of that place, so. And yeah, we're not open most Fri- I'm there every Friday and seeing a few emergencies and stuff like that, so that is a lighter day, I would say.
Do a lot of people come and drop people off though, too? You're talking about wheelchairs and all, or walkers, and do a lot of people come and drop people off?
Well, they usually sit there in the waiting room with them most of the time.
To me, yeah, to me, I'm thinking, come down, if you come down the alley and drop them off and then park the car.
Once every once, you know, a, a great moon will need to call somebody to say, hey, they're done, come, you know, but that's like once a month, once, twice a month, something like that. But anyway, so it's just, it's just, that's what, when I see these people get out of the car and they, they go up on their, on the, on the, from their car to stabilize themselves, up on a curb and ride in, and then they're kinda protective when they're kinda pulled in. The cars aren't going by, they feel like, oh, and then if they open up the parallel parking, which I don't think they'll try.
But those people aren't, if they're that handicapped, that's not the only place they're ever going alone is to the dental clinic, so that means they're pulling into all these other businesses, either parallel or angle and getting out and walking and, I mean, I'm concerned if they're that handicapped to walk across the street, I could, I mean, I don't know, if they can drive.
I concern, I can't, I just can't guess, I can't like judge on other people's health circumstances.
But I mean, by saying this, they're not that handicapped.
So, anyway, it's just something to be considered is all I'm saying. When we look at that, I mean, and say, well, we needed it the other end more than we needed it at the
Yeah.
dental clinic. Is the dental clinic a, a, a place of like a, a really needed business? Or is the, the restaurant and all that, or, or parking down at the end, and then you say, well, then we're gonna make a decision as a dot of where we're gonna have it better for the people. It's either gonna be on the one side, or it's gonna be on the other. I'm okay with it both, which is, I just wanted to, I just needed to speak up for them.
Yeah, and I can appreciate doing that and I look at the other side and, and the people in Lincoln and Nine and Dale, I mean, I look at, um, you know, a lot of businesses, a lot of customers. And, you know, there was talk of, well, Dale's could park in his back lot when he's done with the cars. Well, I started watching that. There's an awful lot of semis that pull in there and starting now through November, I mean, the semis are backing in and coming in. If that Dale's back area was a hundred percent wide open and as open as this building, you still couldn't walk through a shop. So you'd always have to walk around the back to get to your car. Um, and there's, I, I don't know of anybody who waits for their car, you know, I mean, they drop it off, you leave it and go, so. I don't know, I just, I have a, I have a hard time moving the parallel to that side of the street than I do the other side.
Are we done with this whole?
You guys have a question.
You know, if it's really a problem, six months, come back, we'll talk.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
You know, let's let it go for a while and see what happens. If you really got another problem, we'll keep driving by too and check, I mean, but it won't shut you up, but I mean, come, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Something, we'll try it, see how it goes or whatever. That's okay. Unless you guys want to something else. Okay?
And I think, I think our boys would be more than happy to paint
if that's what they wanna do.
Stripes on there, that's gonna help. You know, I mean, at least holds them off.
You got them blue or just up there a little spot?
No, not paint the parallel.
Spot.
Spot.
You don't have to be blue, I know we can park, man. Yeah, just putting in lines for.
Yeah, just the line.
Oh.
So for, for where the vehicle will fit.
Yeah.
We could do that too.
That's a, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Well, we're getting, what, twenty-two on an angled side and nine on a parallel side, I think.
Well, I've noticed there's been two vehicles parking.
Fry's been doing.
Parallel. No, they started, they said, I said, go ahead for now, I said, they just, they, and they said they don't have a problem with it. They got places to park back there and everything.
Sure.
They've been there, you know, and so they didn't have a problem. So they did talk, they did talk, they wanted to make sure everybody knew, you know, I talked to both people, players involved, so. Well, let's see how it goes and, you know. Thank you for coming. Dustin Coast.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Dustin Coast, uh, squad leader of the ambulance service up here at Harvey. Um, I was in about, I think about a year ago, just, uh, forward, talking about some of our thoughts, um. Our call volume is growing, um, in return, that's kinda required some more staff. About sixty-two percent of my staff or so is from beyond ten minutes out of town. So that requires for them to be onsite, staying at our facility. Um, so sometimes, uh, we're experiencing back-to-back calls more often than usual and, um, we can have as many, as, you know, as, at least we have to have four people in there if we're gonna have, if two rigs are gonna be outdoor, if there's a storm or something to prepare for. Different things like that has led us to needing some more space over there along with doing some added training things with our staff to, uh, to accommodate, uh, them without them having to travel different places for it. So that's brought us to, um, this, uh, this summer, we have intentions, uh, and we have approved this addition to our building, and I'll let this pass around. Um, last year after I was in here, I think there was a little bit of some measuring done there and a couple things checked by you and I think we're okay. Um, but I just wanted to bring the final drawing in, see if there's anything more we do need to do or not do, um.
So which direction are you?
So, so this,
Not this, oh.
These, we're not gonna be parking here, but this essentially is the alley.
Oh, okay.
Yep, this is the church over here.
So this is the front?
This is the front, the fire hall's over here. This is our current building right now is right here.
Okay.
So we're gonna go out sixty, or maybe it's forty, and then out forty feet and over sixty and then back again flush.
Okay.
Um, as you are aware, you know, that we do have the food pantry, we considered using the whole building for ourselves, but it just, it works nice. The food pantry's appreciative, we're appreciative of them. Um, so, that's kinda what led us to this. And that's, you know, that's a copy that.
So basically you put in little bedrooms.
Yeah, we're adding, we're adding, so we're adding two more bedrooms. Um, we're adding a little more of an area for some more teaching, um, we're officially now a training center as well. That's gonna allow us to conduct some trainings for the neighboring services, generate a little extra funds for our own service. Um, so, uh, we're, we're growing, I guess you can say. We don't like to grow by call volume, cause I mean, somebody needs us obviously, but, uh, it's just.
So you're just looking for approval to build this and make sure everything works with specs, right?
Yes, correct.
So Jamie, go over there, they figured everything out, we'd be good with that, and everything works with specs and that?
Yeah, I think, isn't that still its own commercial level?
Yeah.
It's like more all the way to the alley, right? So I think.
No.
I think it's three feet, I wanna say for commercial, but I could be wrong.
We have to look.
Yeah.
And you can keep that, I've got another copy, so if it needs to stay in-house.
Yeah, that'd be good.
That's perfectly fine.
And then you'll fill out a building permit for it.
Whatever I need to do, this is kinda new to me, that part, so if, if you can, you know, give me a call or tell me to stop in and do this, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll stop.
Do you have an email address?
Yes.
What is that? And then I'll email it to you.
It's DM Coast ninety-nine. So.
So I was hearing the good line, guideline to them, or yeah, whatever, so like get your permit.
Let's see, so that was last year, right?
Yeah, basically, we, we did a little bit of tweaking with, with some of the internals of it, but yeah, the structure has basically stayed the same from the start. Yeah.
Glad to have you, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for coming.
JDA required, CBB minute or whatever you want to talk about Spencer, just show up.
So yeah, just some minutes included there, the CBB did need, were, uh, just a lot of what's going on this time around, there's a lot of grants going on, so I'm just wrapping up the tree equity grant to get some hazard trees removed and replacements, uh, planned out for some homeowners with boulevard trees at no cost to them, this is a no-cost, uh, grant. Uh, doing some work with the energy efficiency grant, we're gonna be trying to revamp it, the original proposal included some of the wall stuff here and, uh, the payback period ended up being too long for DOE to justify it, so we're gonna kinda reroute and see if we can get some of those dollars tapped, if we just stick to just the windows themselves. Uh, had some preliminary conversations about some destination development type grants, that's kinda what the CBB had talked about. Getting some big-time dollars to utilize some of the space here and we talked about potentially doing some things with that, uh, old Creamery lot that's, that's blank right now and getting something there that, uh, could provide, provide public utility and some community space, so. Uh, working on some of those things, uh, got a couple housing, uh, conversations, you know, one I'm looking to hear from next week, we got kind of a proposal kinda working out, and so hopefully we can see some positive momentum there with, that's what Monty and our developers that we had talked to last year just got ahold of me again today, um, that do some stuff up in rugby, and so they're looking to finish up some fence work and then come revisit here in the spring to talk about some ideas that they wanted to do, so they're just finishing up some, uh, deferred maintenance of some things up in their rugby project, but then they plan to come back down into our area chat with us a little bit more to get some of those ballpark addition and some of the infill lots that we have vacant here in town filled back up. And I think the equalization conversation is just really important, kind of regarding that, is some of the work that I'm doing to try to, whether it's infill or some of these new addition lots, get them filled, is that all these lots owned by the city right now aren't producing a dime in revenue for the city, school, county, whatever it might be. And with the council being receptive on making deals to get these deals done, we get those lots filled and generating revenue, again, ultimately alleviating burden from the rest of existing revenue-producing lots, right? So, uh, the more we get those lots filled, that means that there's more people chipping into the pie of maintaining our infrastructure, whatever it might be. And so, um, just, I, I, I wanna thank you guys for your continued support with our JDA and the work that we do and, and being receptive on getting those deals done, because ultimately they have a really positive ROI for the city and, and ultimately the taxpayers thereof, so, um. Again, with any of the meetings too, uh, some legislative work going through, some little nicks and changes, if there are any questions, feel free to ask or if you reach out, you know, on my cell phone, I'm always a phone call away too, so.
Well, on any of these grants, I was informed today that the president of Lagoon had all this money for the grants, like you didn't get from them there.
Yeah, that, well, that's some federal money and so that's, uh, that's, that's been tough with some of those federal grants. You know, even this energy efficiency one is technically Department of Energy, it's a state pass-through, we kind of, uh, so I don't think that there's any problems with the money there, so we're gonna still keep on that one. But yeah, a lot of those federal grants are, are having some, some issues with funding freezes, um, at that level, so. Our state grants are usually a lot easier, the federal grants are really hard to, to work with and ways to begin with, so, but, um, yeah, there's been some issues there.
Any questions for? Okay, thank you for all.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, questions for, no?
If everybody wants to look at their call system, so. I feel like a broken record every time I come to you guys, like, hey, we're busy, next month is more busy, unfortunately, yeah, um, last month was.
It's picked up.
Yeah, picked up again. Uh, so ma- we had one major arrest, we had one major investigation also last month, I, uh, referenced all of the other, uh, sexual cases I've been working. Also had to go to Minnesota for some investigation and then went to prison twice, so, a lot of travel. There'll be some char- new charges coming out of that next, probably this later this week unfortunately, but we're gonna get justice for that, that's, that's what.
Supposed to be in court today, right? Nearly got canceled.
Yeah, our defense, our, uh, energy defense attorney, God bless you, um, just is sick a lot, so keep on kicking that can down the road, which is kinda bummer, because all these cases are now being stockpiled together. So I, allegedly I was gonna testify on three of them, probably by next month I'll have four of them, so, it's not good. But they're working on that, that's with the district office, that's not gonna do what they're sitting. But, um, yeah, any questions for?
Questions?
Josh gets out.
He's doing what he do.
Thank you, appreciate that. Yeah, Josh got two weeks left, so we're gonna be glad to have him back. Gabby is here tonight, you guys probably have.
Everybody's better, right?
Yeah. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for taking the kids around today, too.
Oh, don't worry, that was fun, that was.
Public Works.
Okay. Board of Adjustments, uh, recommended approval of variances. Deny, we denied two and accepted one, right?
Yep.
So, the motion to approve those, deny two or one?
Two.
Two, loop. Defense and, and.
Defense and, and Greg.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Oh.
The motion to.
So who?
Donnie motion?
Yeah, I'll second.
Milo second, any discussion, any discussion? Any discussion, now they're motions, everybody say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries, okay?
Okay, we got the paving, uh, Beckel paving, the Keller paving, got the bits for the patches that were sewer and water, anything else?
I see there's an extra one for Keller coming back later, so, there's, in the second back, there's another one, is that?
Uh, Beckel, uh, the, Beckel was, uh, he, uh, just rebid them digouts. And that's, pattern numbers, squaring them up, digouts, and filling them up, they were in jazz balls. And he's got twenty-four thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars for the, just the patches. Which Keller is forty-two thousand.
Okay. And when it came in, I, like, uh, then he said if the ones that people had are responsible, then you'd have to call to it off for them, right?
Yeah.
Homeowners, whatever, responsible, and he said you'd have that built out individually, whatever?
You know, and if they start digging and it's, it keeps on coming, they are gonna go further and, and.
Right.
And so over here on Seventh Street, are they gonna dig that down enough to get rid of the swamp right there?
You know, that's all coming up, you know, right now, I mean, that's gonna be, there's a bid there from Keller and Beckel, but, um, you're looking like Sixth Street now, that's all coming up, Seventh Street's coming up. That's, and, but, you know, to do it right, you almost have to dig it all up.
Didn't they do that on Seventh, the last time?
I thought, yeah, I thought.
They thought they dug it out and fabric and backed in and.
On Seventh, I think.
Over by the park.
Over by the park, by Phoenix.
That's roughly the color.
Yeah, didn't, uh, uh, follow, wasn't it?
He dug it in the water line, and then they came back and they dug it out and they put fabric in, I think. And filled it in, and then they paved it, they did it up again when they paved it. And filled it in, and then they paved it, they did it up again when they paved it, and then they reared all of that, yeah.
It's so swampy there.
Yeah, is there a spring under there, or is there some way to put some drain dial in, or something?
I don't know, but it's bad.
Yeah. You know, on Highway Three up by, um, Seafills, you know, they dug it down about six feet, maybe more. They really went down and did a lot of stuff, and so far this spring, even last spring, that didn't, that really didn't heave like it was heaving. So whatever they did in there.
They're like, that drain dial wouldn't be good, I mean, we got that storm sword laying there, you know?
Will there be some way to tie into that, to get rid of that?
I would think.
Building up under there.
You gotta have.
But that's a big project that.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, we could with Prairie Dog.
That's gonna be, yeah, you know, that's gonna be a big problem, cause you're gonna have to figure out, I mean, that's coming from underneath the park, and that's, that whole area.
Yeah. And Sixth Street there, it's like that every year, it's just, it's terrible, and warms up, she starts coming together, you know, it's.
There, again, we, we didn't dig that up, that'd be less than.
On, on, and we didn't dig on Sixth Street. I mean, remember up on, the, like, the frontage road?
Yeah.
They dug that way down, and we got.
I remember that, yeah.
So, and maybe they didn't do a lot of digging on Seven.
Well, they did some.
You know what, I think they didn't, because I think of the location to the railroad tracks. I was just gonna kinda go back here and look and see if I could answer a question while you guys are talking.
I guess my concern there is if we're gonna dig that down and pave it, we should do something so it doesn't come back again in another year or two years.
No, I agree with that.
Cause it seems like an ongoing thing in that same spot.
So do you think you should not do that spot?
I'm, I'm thinking we should go further on that spot.
Yeah, either not do it now and come back and do it right, or.
Dig it down.
Dig it down now.
Is that included in this, them are just the patches?
That's right.
Yeah, this is the other stuff.
Oh, okay.
So.
These, these couple are different, and then these are all different patches. This is basically, uh, so it ain't so rough on North Street and toward, uh, the landfill. You know, there's a couple mammals in there, they're gonna lift it up, asphalt's good, there's nothing wrong with asphalt, it's just where the mammals are lifted.
They gotta take some rings out, or?
Yeah, I don't.
No.
I don't know, they seem to start pushing up here in the later years, it just seems like it's got worse somewhere else. And these, these are Sixth, you know, and that's just basically milling it down a little bit and putting the patch for it. You know, like, right here, that'd be in front of my place.
Yep, yep.
You know, I mean, it's not bad.
I think.
But the water, I mean, the water comes right out of there, comes right out of there.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it comes right out, water sets there, comes right out of the road. I mean, if someone just saw a road map, but it could be, you know, damage on it for a while.
Well, what about, think about the patching job over there, I mean, that's.
The other time it was forty-two thousand, now it hasn't looked that, yeah, I was, I was a bit surprised, but.
So now on the second back, if that's the one.
Now, like, you know, then, then Spider Raps and, oh, the ones we were just talking about, the patch. Those twenty-four thousand would be just the patches, uh, sewer line stuff into the streets.
That's twenty-four, twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Twenty-four, six. Your thoughts?
Which is it done?
What I would need to do.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, you know, like, my nap, but like, Milo saying they're on that Seventh Street, you know, at some point, somebody, we gotta have somebody come in. And really assess that and say, instead of going over it and doing anything, they're wasting any money, I think we gotta.
Right, then they make sure.
Yeah, we gotta do it, you know, it's gonna cost somebody to fix it right, but. You know, now it's starting to come, it's not as bad, but.
Yeah, it was bad.
No, I'm not. Right. So what have we got for Prairie Dog money? Did it cover any of that, or just?
I don't think Prairie Dog money will cover the patches, because I think that's just make it, but I don't know if once we start reconstruction, I wouldn't think that we could use our Prairie Dog money.
So what are you asking for, Tom?
Twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, to do the patches.
Let's get that down.
Yeah, I'd second that.
Who? Motion, second, so, any discussion, any discussion, discussion, we need to roll call now, or not?
No, we should.
Donnie?
Yep.
My own guess, I guess. Hey, motion carries. Okay, so then this next batch, the two hundred thousand, that, some of that's taken off because the patching's already done.
Correct.
The patch included, wasn't it? I mean, that first two lines is four, four inch asphalt patches, so that's, is that all that is already done in the twenty-five, or is that more patching somewhere else?
No, the patching is just, there are eleven patches.
Separate, separate.
So what are, what are these two lines of patching here?
That would've been, he was, uh, doing square footage, uh. The more we did, the less it would be, so he didn't just do the patches alone, he was just kinda going.
He went up from thirty-five hundred to ten thousand. And so his unit price.
The unit price is almost in half, but he's got ten thousand square feet on one and thirty-five hundred on the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was just figuring if, uh, the more he did, the more he drew, the dicker he put it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so does that include the patching on Sixth Street or not, in that twenty-four?
No, no.
That's these two down.
Yeah.
And Milo, on Sixth Street from Grant Avenue to Emerson, we did not do any work on that area, we were up further.
I, I was wondering if it's farther down.
More by Clark and that, so.
Yeah, so I called them up and just had them duty close. Do the patches after, and that's what he had.
So what he done, did he say when he can do it, or?
No, he never said.
So if he, uh, tell him he got the bid, then?
And then the hospital, it sounds like they're gonna be getting that done here in a couple weeks, their, uh, line fixed.
In the parking lot?
Yep, and they gotta come out in the street, so. I would imagine they'd pack it in and get it done, but want to get that fixed right there. It'd be nice to set, but. Without main traffic, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
So these ones that are on, so Seventh Street and Sixth Street, they got it up or not, what's, what's the plan for that?
Good way to do it, right, get the engineers involved.
Yeah, we're not doing this one.
Right.
Not doing that now, but is that, that's something we can get rid of our money later on?
I, I agree, that's what, that's what I'm thinking, should we go down and?
Dig out?
Yeah, that'd be good.
You could, might should use it.
Yeah, that'll do, uh, streets are gonna need a little bit more work.
Gotta get more engineering involved?
Yeah.
You know, they told me.
Go ahead, they called me too, the mile and a half on, uh, Strong Five down there by Hamper Road, that's not big, we said they have nine hundred thousand, now the bid changed to two point one million.
Ouch.
So, didn't have good meeting this, cause that's, Dr. John, and this, whoa, that's quite a bit of difference, I don't know what's going on there, but it was about a mile and a half, I think, about it. So I don't know what, I thought they said they had nine hundred gone, but then all of a sudden, I don't know who their engineer is in San Torre, basically, they're calling up, I don't know why. Something, something wasn't right to whatever.
How much do they want now?
I think two point one.
Over two, million more than what they, over a million more.
Mile and a half, was it, right? So, this highway is not getting done this year, out here?
No.
Not, it's a, so.
State guys.
Are they coming next year?
It, it's not even up for bids till November now, they moved everything.
Back?
Yep.
But possibly next year, then maybe we could use them, something to be around.
They'll, they'll do bids in November.
Somebody's close to.
And then the bits award is coming next spring.
So it's off for this year?
Whoever wins the bid will be in to do the payment.
So we should have our discussion, we wanna do something if somebody's around.
It's pretty much, it's pretty much the state, the state has money.
Yeah.
They've already been given the money, so it's pretty much, uh, they don't really care what goes on in this part of the state, so.
And we should have, we get this done.
They can maybe use that money somewhere else. Somebody else from.
We got that money at the time.
They don't care.
Is there else next?
Nothing going on here. The boiler in the basement is, uh, right one is not working, the water took out the board. So, uh, Gary Keller was over in, in Elijah, and the heat exchanger is out, that's fifteen hundred dollars, three hundred to get it here. The board is out, that's six hundred dollars. Um, you notice the piping, that exhaust, you know, stuff, that was never moved together, so that's, you think you're gonna have to redo that? Cause it drips on the boilers, um. Just a few different things that, uh, they seen that they gotta get into, uh, safety switch wasn't hooked up for the boiler, so if that blew.
Has not gone?
No. Um, and so this is the main stuff, so need to get that roof and get that stuff, that one more.
Move to a roof?
Second, is there's, uh.
Anything else, wow.
Fan motors up, out on the, uh, heat exchanger up there, that's, uh, out, so we'll do a fan motor.
So is this stuff underneath covered by the, same claim is getting flooded?
Probably the electronic board, because it was right underneath where the toilet was, and the water came down. So that we could, but the rest would.
That's true, the heat exchanger got a, uh, hole in it, size of a quarter.
Okay, well.
When it rains, it pours.
Any other discussion?
It's only gotta get it fixed.
Yeah.
That probably looked up.
Well, favorite motion, say if you've ever seen aye?
Aye.
Both same side, okay?
That's a door.
Okay, thank you very much.
It always needs so much.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, Karen, the only text I got to be able to get that spotlight, they're the traffic, the spot, stop.
It'll be in the paper, we got, uh, ad, it'll be in the paper, we'll open bids at next meeting for the stoplight downstairs.
Oh.
Cause I didn't get it in.
Why are we not doing it in time?
I didn't get it in.
Oh.
It's my fault, I didn't get it done in time.
That's all he's worried about, though, huh?
I was a week.
I said, Texan, make sure they get the stoplights, okay, whatever you're doing, I said, okay, I'll forget it.
So it is in, it'll, will be in the paper, it's already.
Yeah.
Wear it into your car wash.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Magic, yes, you can tackle the sound system.
Okay, so that was a stop light, and then. Sound system or whatever, that, the vets and the legion are buying a sound system on here, so they'll need that out of this, they have a project, they wanna put a new sound system on.
Really?
They said they're looking for a ways, one project, uh, what's his name, Rick and Buck, and Buck, Buck are getting in charge, and they approached me, Buck, Buck and Rick, Buck, yeah, we love. About nine thousand dollars or so.
Oh, nice, I think.
But it'd be all wireless, I think, and everything, so that would be, be good, I guess, so let's not blow them up then. The goal would be to have a Friday program, so that was, whatever, so, so I think they wanna do something like that, so very thankful for them.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, Armory is now functional, everything's done, what do you guys wanna do with it? Do you wanna open it, whatever, I suggest, I'd like to open it.
I, uh, this is my opinion. Okay, summer's coming. I don't think we need anybody in here in the evenings right now, there's other places to play basketball. I think it should stay locked for the summer. And come fall, when it gets colder, open it up, and maybe if it's closed for a while, uh, then kids will figure out that, hey, you know, we take care.
What time do you think, what, what'd you say, what, what's your estimation of time?
Well, I would say schools, you know, yeah, close when you leave, five o'clock.
I, I'm not sure that, you know, you guys have been walking in and out of here late at night, or later on, and seeing no basketball going on, there's, I mean.
It depends on the night.
Yeah.
It does, but.
I, I come in here a lot of times, and it closes at ten, there's still kids playing basketball.
Yeah, I don't really think.
They need to be in here playing basketball. There's three other places they think they're gonna play basketball.
I get they don't have any place to go, but.
But it's not winter now.
It's not winter.
So I'm okay with that too, if we close it up for the summer?
Yeah.
Start my home.
I mean, come fall, when it cools off and they need to be inside, yeah, that's not a problem, no. And maybe they'll get, uh, get the hint.
I don't think I don't like either, as you come in and basketballs aren't put away, they're, maybe they're all.
There's gotta be some provisions.
There's been several times I've chased a bunch of teenie boppers out here that is sitting here on the drums.
That's what I mean, you know, I've seen, I've, two kids I know that should be at home doing their s- schoolwork, that are hanging out here, laying on the floor, reading their cellphone, I told them. Get the heck out of here, get home, douche.
Gonna hear about it a little bit, I think, but whatever.
That's fine, yeah.
Let them here. Do they, does whoever's doing the bitching, do they wanna come down here at five o'clock when you guys leave and sit there till ten o'clock at night?
So many things going through my head.
Watch everybody that comes in and out of the door.
Yeah, no, at the high school, they can come in and play, they, they can go play at the high school, but a coach, you know, the coach or an employee.
Has to be.
He has to be there, yeah, I mean, they're, they're more than welcome, and I get kids calling me all the time that, hey, I got this guy to open it, are we good? Yeah, if it's the right, yeah, you can go, but not just to walk in whenever you want.
I'd say it would just be a, a lesson. That's my.
Well, and I get that, it's, uh, not a normal thing that happened, and it's not a normal, uh, person down here playing, you know, it was somebody that ruined it. But it could just as well be anybody, but I, I personally don't see them taking care of this place either, the ones that are here playing, so they, there's gotta be some more teeth put in it, I think.
I don't know, maybe I'm being too much of a hard ass, I don't know.
I like the eight to fi- eight to five.
For now, I think.
You can visit later, I mean, yeah, we'll, leave it closed for now.
Yeah, leave it closed for now, leave it all you got to sign out there, leave it.
You gotta sign out there, say what you hear, and what's, what you hearing, if you hear stuff, you can always address it another time.
Yeah, leave it how it is, and then when, uh, it gets cold, talk about it.
We have some nice facilities outside here, I mean, I'm gonna break that up, the park, you know, so, over there, like, you wanna play, but why don't you go over and play at the nice place over there, and, and other stuff, and I know, just. I know right here's some of it, but.
And they, they do play over there, and there again, there's some things that have to be watched over there, they, they tried to put those baskets.
Yeah, I know.
At a better level, you know, cause those baskets just take a crank, move them up and down.
That they're gonna get a.
Also, you got some kids that can lower it down, and now they're, you know, it's gonna only take a while till they're torn. Yeah, but.
They can leave on there so they can do it, you told me, but maybe hopefully they're gonna.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, if they send them, but that's not our.
We, you can motion that, I don't know.
I think it's just consensus.
Just consensus that we're for now, and we can, they can, like, see what happens, see what happens.
Going in there, you know, see what everybody says. I know they're gonna be so complaining, but like I said, if you wanna complain, are you gonna come down and say?
I just said, I mean, if they're responsible. I said, they're responsible, they all, you come and opens, they have an offer of six to seven or something like. But, but you gotta, I mean, that'd be my tip, but I could see.
I also, no, but I just had energy drink.
I mean, it's summer. Kids should be able to. So the consensus is to leave it.
Close for now.
I guess we have to revisit it, we will revisit it, let another time if you hear stuff, wanna bring it up another time, bring it up, how's that, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Um, we talked about the business, okay, we have a couple permits?
Armory, we, you missed unfinished business, Armory updated windows? Uh, Armory, wait, you missed unfinished business, Armory updated windows?
Up windows, yeah, then, that's, oh.
Well, he, he did do, so shall we, I, I just, I'm looking for direction.
Okay.
Do we wanna wait for Spencer to see if he can go back through one more time and try to see if he can adjust the windows and, uh, if he can get that energy efficiency grant before we just go ahead and put it out for bid?
Should we do that ourselves, I mean, these guys are down out here.
So, what, they're out here and did the wells, eh?
Yes.
So.
We haven't heard back yet.
That's a whole separate thing, or that's?
That's a separate thing.
That's not the windows, that doesn't govern.
No, that will not come up, that's bathrooms.
So, don't you guys think something has to be done with them, or, I mean, whether, whether they don't do it, we gotta do it, I mean, it just.
I mean, are they, are we approved to do it out there, are, are they gonna pay for it, or?
The bathrooms? No, we would have to pay for windows.
Okay, oh, we still need to. If they look.
Find the budget or something, it'd look like, uh. That's such a nice word. So, can we make that to look like to the side, is that the idea, right? Yeah, we have to peel off all that, uh.
That's great, we, we'll have to figure out what we wanna do with the front, I guess that's where I'm kind of asking, do we wanna move forward with it now? Do we wanna wait for Spencer to see if he can find some more grant money? Do we wanna put it out for bid so we can get on somebody's call list?
What does the prospect of grant coming for?
I, I have no clue.
The answer, I don't look like they're gonna.
This work is.
I mean, it was eighty, it would take eighty-eight years for.
July.
Eighty-eight years, you were payback, they're not gonna do it.
No, okay, no.
Can you go out and get this?
That's what I'm wondering, if we.
Can you go get this?
We couldn't start the project before, but I think we could maybe do the.
Good work.
Why can't we do both then, put it out?
Maybe we should.
Yeah, they put it on for bids next month, we'll carry it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we just want the front, the windows and whatever, and, oh, we have to decide a lot, too.
What this place uses in propane, astronomical.
They got the windows done, huh?
You know, maybe they. When you, when you get, when you got a thousand gallon tank in the, in there, and you gotta be here every five to six days, or it runs empty, that's crazy.
Yeah. Yeah, well, should we, any more?
I, I think we.
Is that a motion to put it all in front of the, what, it all?
I, I think so.
Sure.
We just wanna see it's out there, whatever.
Okay. We'll do.
Approve the motion.
All right.
That's the same. Move the, move the motion for the windows and the front of the Armory.
Yes.
Okay.
And front, and whatever else it includes in the front.
Yeah.
Get it facing like it was said. Okay, any discussion? Discussion, any discussion, all favor that motion, if I would say aye.
Aye, aye.
Both same side, okay?
Okay, sorry.
No, 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 I, I, I didn't, I thought that was something else, we have some permits, I guess, what, for me, for Arnold?
Not in there.
Not in, not in there?
It, we, we just have it, um, she has a conditional use, I guess, for you guys who don't. It's just a renewal for her conditional use permit that she can do, um, her business out of her home, and Milo and Mike, sorry.
So, she's doing business over here now, or?
She is, but she wants to keep this, so she doesn't have to go through the whole process, so.
Okay, okay, any discussion, discussion, any discussion, all favors, everybody's aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both same side, I'm gonna do this Arbor Day proclamation, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, decided.
We, we don't have to, if you don't want to.
Arbor Day, you guys gotta cut it out from them. Do you need to stand up and read that? I designate, Milo, to read that, or we're gonna do their, they don't. Yeah, so I just signed that whatever, so, okay. Uh, city property, but just saw a bid in there for, for next door to, what, Mary was over here, one by a box, that's worth six hundred dollars, or, I can, which one?
Just to the, just to the east.
One of the lottas.
Yeah, it's pretty hard to read.
Your house was tore down there, whatever, what do you cost, right?
Six hundred, six hundred dollars?
Six hundred dollars, but we're asking fifteen, and she wants six hundred, and I don't know.
What's, um, yeah, and then she has specials, right?
She does, but we did publish it in the paper for fifteen hundred dollars.
So, that would be the minimum bid, wouldn't it?
That would what?
Wouldn't that be the minimum, minimum?
That's what I would think.
Yeah. It's kinda like they got one by the name, or you know, you wanted to tell them, you guys were, it's a tough time.
I saw that a couple times.
Yeah.
So, we don't want it, just, just hundred, you don't want, you don't want? I would say she should be the minimum bid, whatever that, where it was, if that was fifteen hundred, then automatically do it for the fifty hundred. And we did get, we got two dollars.
Is she, uh, I mean, like, wh- what's the plan, because she says here she's got a, she'd have to remove the diseased shelter belt, so what's, like, what's, what's the plan?
Is there Dr. John doctor or something?
Well, I mean, is she, is she building something there, or just wants it so?
I think she just wants.
Nobody builds her.
We just tell her, because we like the minimum bida's right now, we're just, we're minimum bid.
See if we can get it.
So, we don't have to do nothing there, because they did, okay?
Well, we should, do we need a motion from the, aye? Uh, no, I think we just, the consensus is, just consenting.
The bid was fifteen minimums, right? Oh, what do we have here, is this a, a Blan Trail Blazers, permit?
Or a game, a wrestling?
Motion to approve.
Any motion, second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, discussion, all favors, everybody's aye?
Aye.
Eagles?
Move to proof.
Milo, second?
I'll second.
Aye, discussion.
Sure, you can't keep up with your aim, she said.
Discussion, all favor the motion, take it, whether it's aye.
Aye.
Social events, uh, craft, you got, you have two of them there?
We got a couple of them, yeah.
I think, what's your name's taken over there, I'm not sure.
I made a motion to approve them.
Approve them, I can, both of them, right?
Yep, multiple.
Okay, second, second, Milo, second, any discussion, 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 all favor the motion, take it, whether it's aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, so they hear four, thirty bones, any questions on them? Park board minutes, they, they remember the park board, they just had to tell us, so that's to tell us the county, so that was, remember, five, three minutes, anything going on? You guys not fix that door there, or what, I was over there that day, and they said, you guys had something with the door, or?
Well, they were, Frost is giving up that, like, I think I'm just gonna go over there and grind that sucker down.
Yeah, I'm doing that one, and it picks that one, I want to close and put it together, and but I don't know, it's up top, and, oh, the clothes I can try again? Yeah, and I kind of just, got your tools, and I just, whatever, it must not have come apart anymore, so I don't know, I'm working on it, but, so. Okay. The outside, the closer, um, little, um, part where it slides together, for some reason it loosens up. Carpet and the mop list should be started on the fourteenth, and you guys know that, poms or whatever, and, and a whole collusion, they'll take off all the boards, so we're gonna mop right, put them back on, and they, you know, charge there. Only charge they give us, the carpet, they're coming in fourteenth, so unless we're colored, the girl picked it up, I have no idea, so it's on that, but, so, that's a pretty fair deal, really, what they did for us there, so. Other than that, any other council business? Any other council business? You didn't jerk.
Hey, you got Johnny or Mike?
That might be worse.
What time's the park for, you heard that?
Seven.
Can I come over there?
Huh? Well, we're gonna be many chairs available.
So, with the morning, how much should we hear, and what's the time to get going? Next one, we put them off, we study.
Well, they want, they want to get approval.
Yeah.
To go get grant money for the center.
Oh, for the water or the?
Water. Water.
So, don't be caught in, if we get a grant from them, they're gonna come back.
They said it was too big, midnight, it was too big midnight.
So, did we put that, like, last fall?
Can I get a question for you?
We did, we did a capital clearing plan, just a.
So, the Armory is closed, if I, if I get that, if it's raining for four or five days, why can't I come here and lock it?
Why don't you call me and talk to me, and we'll unlock it, and you can use.
That's my plan, it's called, are they gonna know that, I mean?
No, you call our office, yeah, we'll get you a key, we'll give you a key.
That's my whole thing, I'm not responsible, I don't have a problem, I'll just, but.
I, I, I understand that, but.
I think I'm, come to fall, probably will do something, but I mean, like, summertime now, and I, I, I could go either way, I really could, I just see, everything's nice and cleaned up now, and everybody, I see somebody's skin, I, I. I hate to say it, but. You should be, whatever, I don't know.